Good evening. I would like to call upon the regular meeting of the Planning Commission to order at 6:00 P. M. Vice Chair Carver Hall, could you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Sure. Please, ma'am, put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
The Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice Chair Carver Hall. Planning Secretary, may we have a roll call vote, I mean, a roll call, please?
Definitely Chair Jimenez. Commissioner Ayala is not present. Commissioner Flores.
Here.
Commissioner Mora.
Here.
Vice Chair Carver Hall.
Here.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, great. Ex parte communications. This section is intended to allow all officials the opportunity to reveal any disclosure regarding site visits or ex parte communications about public hearings, or are there any ex parte communications from the commission?
Commissioner Carver Hall, none?
Commissioner Flores, no?
Mora, none.
Moving on to item five, public comments. Public comments are now open. Anyone joining us through Zoom can use the raise hand function if you wish to make a public comment on any item on the agenda or not on the agenda. The Planning Secretary will see if you have raised your hand through the Zoom application. Please note that you have three minutes to speak. Planning Secretary, is there any members of the public wishing to speak at this time?
We have no public comments.
Great. I will now close public comments and move on to the next item. Item number six, new business election of commission officers for 2023. I would like to call upon Planning Secretary to please proceed with the election of commission officers for 2023. Planning Secretary?
Planning Commissioners, I'd like to declare the office of the chairperson vacant and take nominations are now open, excuse me. Does any of the commissioners have any nominations?
I would like to nominate Vice Chair Carver Hall for chairperson.
Do we have any further nominations? Hearing none, I'd like to close the nominations for chairperson. Do we have a motion for the nomination and do we have a second?
I'll move. Mora?
Jimenez, second.
I'll not take roll call vote. Commissioner Carver Hall? Commissioner Flores?
Yes.
Commissioner Jimenez?
Aye.
Commissioner Mora?
Aye.
Congratulations. Chair Carver Hall?
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I'd like to down declare the office of Vice Chairperson vacant. Do I have any nominations for Vice Chair?
I'd like to nominate David Ayala.
I'll second.
That was going to be my question, sir, because we wanted to nominate Commissioner Ayala, but he's not here. Is that okay? Excellent. Thank you.
We have a nomination for Commissioner Ayala by Chair Carver Hall. Is there any further nomination?
Excuse me, Madam Secretary, I thought, was it, it wasn't Francis?
It was more, Tom Mora.
Oh, my apologies.
It was me.
And I second.
And you seconded? Perfect. Congratulations to Vice Chair Ayala. I do apologize, I'll take a roll call vote. Commissioner Carver Hall?
Yes.
Commissioner Flores?
Aye.
Commissioner Jimenez?
Aye.
And Commissioner Mora?
Aye.
Thank you, Vice Chair Ayala. Congratulations. And then moving on, Francis.
Item number seven, public hearing, adoption of negative declaration. Amendment to conditional use permit, A C U P case number 524. I would like to call upon Associate Planner Vince Velasco to please present item number seven.
Good evening, Plating Commissioners. Happy New Year. Happy first meeting of 2023. Here tonight to present item number seven, the amendment to conditional use permit case number 524. The subject property is located at 12815 Imperial Highway. Highlighted there in yellow. As you can see, it's a landlocked parcel by means of a 55-foot wide access easement off of Imperial Highway. The general plan land use designation is industrial. The zoning is M2 heavy manufacturing, and the applicant is GreenCycle. A little background on the subject property. First, in 1982, the company was known as United Pacific Corporation and occupied the subject property for green waste recycling, and this happened before the CUP was approved. And just a little bit more background operation, information, at the time in 1982, they used to operate with a, with chipping and grinding as part of the operation. However, an older grinding machine tub grinder could not be properly contained, the chipping materials, and it caused some of the materials to come airborne and sometimes flew into the Westerly neighborly's yard. But, so the reason I bring that before you is because in 1995, when the CUP was originally approved, it was conditioned that chipping and grinding be prohibited. However, in 2016, and just as a fun fact, one of my first projects in the city, the Planning Commission approved a CUP amendment to allow the chipping and grinding activities to return, but also to allow the collection of small volume construction demolition and inert debris, otherwise known as CDI materials, as part of the existing green waste transfer facility activities. And as just part of the background of the operations, green waste is received and transferred from the facility for local landscapers, tree trimmers, private residents, school districts, and area municipalities. Truckloads are inspected and weighed on a 70-foot scale, and then the loads are dumped and segregated according to the product size. Right now, the daily average volumes consist of green waste and CDI. The, it should be noted that the applicant does have a permit through the LA County Department of Public Health. That permit allows for up to 200 tons per day of green waste collection and 24.9 tons per day of CDI collection. However, you can see, they are currently only averaging about 80 to 95 tons per day of green waste and eight to 14 tons per day of CDI materials. The bulk materials are delivered to processing sites in the cities of Chino, Santa Clarita, Montclair, and Azusa. And the materials are sorted and shipped to agriculture and commercial horticulture markets within 24 to 36 hours, however, sometimes not to exceed 15 days. And the hours of operation remain as Monday through Friday, 6:30 to 5:00, and Saturday from 7:00 to 5:00 P. M. These are the existing site conditions. First, the ingress and egress off of, again, the access easement highlighted with the red arrows. And then as you enter, you'll see the 70-foot scale and the office building, the scale office. There is an existing 6,264 square foot office building on site. There's a canopy structure in the rear. This turquoise square is the grinder machine. And in the top of the property, the norley property line, is the designated material bunkers where the materials are stored. So that brings us to the request for you tonight. However, as I mentioned, they're only averaging about eight to 14 tons per day, but that is average. There has been a few times where they've come near their 24.9 tons per day, and as such, they would like an increase in the processing capacity. So from 24.9 tons per day to the next available permit, as required by the LA County Department of Public Health, 49.9 tons per day as part of their existing green waste transfer facility. There was initial study negative declaration prepared by Blodgett and Bayless Environmental Planning. That document was circulated with the State Clearinghouse for the required 30-day public review and comment period. That was last February to March, and we did receive one comment by Cal Recycle, essentially just clarifying the existing permit limitations and requested notice of the public hearing. A response was provided to them, and the public hearing was also provided to them. The public hearing notice for the project was mailed out to all property owners within 500 feet, published in the Whittier Daily News, and also posted in City Hall, Town Center Hall kiosk, and the City Library on December 28th. We did receive one comment. The first, I guess, coordination with that comment was on January 3rd. It was from the City of Cerritos Department of Public Works, essentially requesting the truck route information and to be noticed of the public hearing. And you may have received an email earlier this afternoon from the City of Cerritos. It was a formal letter. If you don't have a copy or you did not see your emails, I do have them printed, but they essentially asked for a condition of approval to restrict inbound and outbound truck traffic from the City of Cerritos boundaries. Staff obviously wants to be a good neighbor to the City of Cerritos, but we tried to take the practicality into their request. Their request is very hard to enforce, being that the applicant's clients for inbound green waste is unknown. They don't have contracts. The green waste could come from anywhere. The outbound deliveries to the landfills currently don't go through the City of Cerritos, which was made known to the City of Cerritos. However, they still wanted a condition of approval to enforce that. So as part of our goodwill, we staff proposed a condition, or drafted a condition of approval that we did have the City Attorney's Office look at, and it is there on the screen. Essentially, that the applicant understands and agrees that all inbound and outbound truck traffic shall utilize only streets designated as truck routes or otherwise streets with unlimited capacity. The applicant shall also commit to educating their clients on the location of nearby truck routes. We felt that this was the fair approach to their request. The applicant has been provided with the letter from the City of Cerritos and our proposed condition. We don't have a formal agreement with the applicant on this proposed draft condition, but when we get to the applicant's comments, the commission can ask for that. Okay, as part of the commission's considerations and discussion, you're welcome to bring this up and we can talk about it further if needed. Otherwise, you can approve, deny, or provide changes. So moving on to the considerations, it should be noted that no interior, exterior modifications to the existing building, parking area, or overall site are proposed. The subject amendment will allow the retention of an existing business that services the region and also provides the applicant with potential for future growth. At a maximum capacity, the proposed increase is expected to have a net impact of only four truck trips per day. And lastly, the applicant is bound by several conditions of approval to ensure that their continued operation will not conflict with any regulations set forth by regulatory agencies, nor pose a public nuisance to adjacent property owners and tenants. With that said, staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve and adopt the proposed environmental documents, including the ISND, and approve amendment to conditional use permit case number 524, subject to the conditions as stated within the attached resolution, and adopt resolution number 226-2023, which incorporates the Planning Commission's findings and actions regarding this matter with the discussion of the proposed condition. That concludes my presentation. I'm here to answer any questions. The environmental consultant is on the Zoom, and the applicant is here in the audience.
So before going forward, I'd like the record to reflect that Commissioner Ayala is present and has been for this presentation. And at this point, do any of the commissioners have any questions on this item for the planning staff?
No questions.
Hearing none?
Yeah, no, John, I got, I got one, maybe a couple.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Commissioner Mora.
Yeah, so like with this, well, before they even get, if they get to the increase in the amount of recyclable material that's coming in, does our city benefit in any way from this facility, whether by tax revenues or, or any other benefit to the city that we have with them?
There were, to be transparent, there were discussions regarding potential fee. However, based on recommendations by the City Attorney's Office, those conversations ended. It's something that could be explored in the future by other development fee studies, but until that time, there's no fee that's being collected. Is that correct?
Okay, thank you.
Yes, that is, that is correct. We need to have some type of nexus, and we would need to have some type of comprehensive impact fee study before we can start impacting, imposing, I should say, such fees.
Okay, well, that may be something we could take a look at considering, you know, heavy trucks and multiple trucks using our city streets. So maybe we'll keep that as a consideration in the future.
Absolutely.
Great question. Any other questions, Commissioner Mora?
No, that was about it. And no, but it's a good job. And you know, I just want to make sure that, you know, we do let Cerritos know. And like you said, we do want to maintain our, you know, neighborly relationship with them, but, you know, we have no control of inbound trucks. And I guess the best we could do is exactly as you mentioned, you know, just educate the facility and the drivers on which routes to take. So, so they know that, you know, good job with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so the public hearing is now open. If the applicant or applicants wish to speak, please approach to the podium or use the raise hand function at this time. If the applicants wish to speak, please instruct the applicant to, well, there we go. I instructed you. Please state your name and city of residence for the record and address the Planning Commission, please.
Yes, ma'am. The name of the owner of the planning commission? Your name was the owner? I am the owner of GreenCycle. I reside at 12. That's the company's address. I reside at 36756 Nancy Lane in the city of Rancho Mirage, California. With reference to the draft truck route condition that I've been supplied a copy of, I wanted to say first of all that, to our knowledge, any traffic coming from the city of Cerritos is probably well under 5% on any given day. And for that reason, they certainly are not much impacted by any outbound traffic from the city headed in our direction. I also indicated to staff that I had no problem with the draft resolution as supplied to me, and would certainly acquiesce in that context and that language for benefit of consideration by the Planning Commission. We have been in business since 1983. Not always doing green waste recycling, but it started out as a tree trimming company. And then the answer to the abundant amount of material that was ending up in the landfill, we looked into the possibility of recycling the green waste and have been doing really off and on since 1983 and exclusively since 2002. We look forward to a continuing close relationship with the city of Santa Fe Springs. And the request to enhance the inbound traffic from 29.9 to 49.9 would definitely help us in terms of, of our inbound revenues and, but not tax the existing property, its capacity, or function. With that, I would be more than happy to answer any questions that the commissioners might have.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Do any of the commissioners have any questions for the applicant at this time?
Commissioner Jimenez, not at this time?
No questions.
No question. Is there anyone from the audience wishing to speak on this matter? If so, please use the raise hand function or approach the podium. Thank you. Were there any comments submitted via email for item number seven? Okay. Okay, do any of the commissioners have any comments regarding this matter? This will be the time for deliberation. If not, is there a motion to approve resolution number 226-2023 for amendment to conditional use permit, case number 524, which also includes a new condition of approval relating to Cerritos comment? May I have a motion?
I'll move. Commissioner Jimenez?
May I have a second?
Second, Commissioner Ayala.
Planning Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Aye.
Chair Carver Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Flores?
Aye.
Commissioner Jimenez?
Aye.
Pass this 4050.
So ordered.
Aye.
Planning Commissioner Attorney, please.
The commission's action on this item shall become effective 14 days after receipt by the applicant a written notice of the commission's action. The applicant and/or any other interested party may file an appeal of the commission's action to the city council. The appeal must be in writing and filed with the city clerk within the previously mentioned 14-day period.
Thank you. On to number eight, announcements. Are there any commissioners that have any announcements that would you like to share? We'll start off with Commissioner Ayala. Commissioner Flores?
No comments.
Commissioner Jimenez?
Yes, I've got a couple of comments. Excuse me for not being there. I'm kind of out of the weather. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Chair Carver Hall for your new position, and also Vice Chair Ayala. I know you do a great job, and I'm looking forward to it. And I want to welcome back Commissioner Mora. It's good to have you back. I mean, when I started, I think it was eight years ago, I think we started at the same year, and it's always good to have you on our team here on the planning commissioner, and I would like to welcome our newest commissioner, Commissioner Flores.
Awesome. Commissioner Mora?
Yeah, good evening, everybody. And also, just for the record, I, I think Theresa, you were, I was not able to hear you through my speakers, but on that last item, it was an "I" for the record. I wasn't sure if you were able to catch that or not. And also, yeah, thank Gabriel. It's, it's good to be back. You know, I always enjoy serving our city. Congratulations to our Chair Carver Hall and Vice Chair Ayala. And also, Mr. Flores, you know, just glad to be working with you also. And yeah, next meeting, I'll make sure that I rearrange my patients, and we'll meet there in person. And also, happy new year, everybody.
My apologies, Commissioner Mora, can you repeat what your roll call vote was?
I'm sorry, I could barely hear you, Theresa.
Can you repeat what you indicated regarding your roll call vote?
Yeah, for item number eight, it was an "I."
An "I," approving it?
Yes.
Yes, approving it, yes.
And for my comments, I'd like to thank everybody for their vote. Was looking back, and I believe I'm the first woman chairperson in over 15 years. So I'd like to thank everybody that has helped me along this way. I'd like to thank also Vice Chair Ayala. I think you're going to be great. We're going to be an awesome team, learning from each other. Welcome, Commissioner Flores. I look forward to working with you. Commissioner Jimenez, I have big shoes to fill, and I thank you for all your work and trainings. I appreciate that. And Commissioner Mora, I'm glad you're back. You and I go way back, and I look for your expertise as well. And I think we have a good group here. Everybody knows, I always say, planning department is number one in the city, led by a beautiful person, Mr. Morel. Yay. And yes, he does need a raise. Okay, I won't say it. Is there any staff that has any announcements?
Good evening, commissioners. First, I want to say Happy New Year. I also want to congratulate Chair Carver Hall and Vice Chair Ayala. I want to welcome Commissioner Flores and welcome back Commissioner Mora. Look forward to working with the both of you guys. For tonight, I just have more of an update and a heads up that, you know, we're looking at doing a joint study session for Planning Commission, City Council. We're working with both the city managers, secretary, as well as our planning secretary to coordinate a date that would work best for everyone. Right now, we're targeting either January 24th, if it happens to, to work for a January meeting. If not, the two city council meetings in February, either the February 7th meeting or the February 21st meeting. It's essentially going to be an update of our zoning efforts as a follow-up to the general plan. In addition to that, I just wanted to share that, you know, staff is also working with a consultant, AECOM, on objective design standards. And there's also efforts to Um, and there's also efforts to have a workshop to share the product in draft form sometime in February. I don't have a date. I just wanted to give you a heads up on that as well. Uh, that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Excuse me, Kwong, objective design standard four, so that they know.
Right. So the objective design standards, essentially it's, um, to provide clarity on design, um, for multifamily residential as well as mixed-use, uh, projects. Uh, it's very critical to Santa Fe Springs because, um, prior to the general plan, we actually did not have a mixed-use category.
Thank you. Are there any other staff announcements?
Actually, planning commissioners, the February, uh, commission meeting is scheduled usually for the second Monday, which is February the thirteenth. It's actually a city holiday and I need to know exactly what date would you like to hold? The February meeting on availability for both Russell and staff is either the eighth, the fourteenth, or the twenty-second or twenty-fourth.
Well, the fourteenth is Valentine's and I know you people have to get some roses, so let's, um, probably do away with that. Does anybody have any? Anybody have anything for February eighth? Let's start at the beginning. Is that the first Monday? I turned my phone off.
It is a Wednesday.
Oh, a Wednesday, okay. I'm good with the eighth. Um, Commissioner Mora or Jimenez?
I'm good with the eighth.
I'm fine with the eighth.
Okay, so let's do February eighth. You okay with that? Okay, you can do Zoom too. Okay, so our meeting will be February eighth at six P M. You're in the chambers. Uh, if there's no other announcements?
Unless Vince has, Vince, did you want to say anything? Okay. Just, uh, echo the sentiment of, of Kwong. Uh, Chairperson Carvahal, congratulations. Well deserved and first female in fifteen years. Congratulations. And just, uh, welcome Commissioner Flores. And of course, uh, Commissioner Mora. And Mr. Ayala, welcome back. And so as Chairperson Carvahal said, we have a great group, so really looking forward to, to meetings for twenty twenty-three. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morel. At this time, I'd like to adjourn the meeting at six thirty-four. And adjourn to February eighth, six P M.
Good night.
Night.